Morning, everybody, and welcome to another episode of The Rad Life. Today I have a special guest on, a friend of mine, Dr. Faisal Ghazi, who is a neurologist here in Orange County. And he has decided to throw his hat in the ring for public office, running for the city council in Fullerton, District 2. So Fullerton is a districted city, and so he's running for District 2 in Fullerton. I want to bring him on. Really interesting conversation I am sure will ensue here. Very nice gentleman who has a lot of articulation on what he stands for and what he has been involved in, in his capacity as a physician, but also has been involved in community outreach programs and so forth. So let me bring Dr. Faisal on. Let's see where he is. Dr. Faisal, are you there?
Yes.
How are you? Good morning.
Good morning. How are you?
I'm good. I'm good. So I was saying that for some odd reason or the other, you decided to throw your hat in the ring for public office in Orange County. Because you're not busy enough, right? You're... And we'll get to that. We'll get to that. You're a busy guy and you're involved in a lot of stuff. But I always find it fascinating when people say, "I have a need to run for public office." And I always want to know what made them get to that point. And sometimes it's not a sudden thing. Sometimes it's something they've been thinking about for a while and, you know, trying to figure out. And maybe they have attempted to do things without being in that capacity or that role. And now they feel like it's time for them to step up into that level. So but before we get to that exciting stuff, what I would like to do, if possible, is just, if you can take a minute, please, and introduce yourself to our audience and tell them, you know, what you do and how long you've been doing it for. That would be great.
Yeah, thank you first of all. Thanks for having me. My name is Faisal Ghazi. I'm a neurologist. And that's my daytime profession. I've had a fortunate blessing to spare head and co-founded a large neurology specialty group. So that makes me a healthcare business owner. I'm a husband, a father of two former foster youth and currently a minor placed in foster care with us, right, about when the pandemic began, actually. And then we have a toddler of our own who's now just turned two. I have a long track record of community service. Public office is something that I had not really thought about or wasn't something I was considering. But being active in the community in terms of doing grassroots work, in terms of doing social service drives, food drives, toy drives, helping the local nonprofits, having served on a commission in my city that invested nonprofit, which is a community development commission, and having had a deep interest in policy work. One of my desires was to keep finding ways to scale up my activism or my active work for the community to a level where I can help continue to help more and more people, which I think governance at a legislative level allows you to do. But I think for me, the really critical thing was that the pandemic changed everything. Because one way is that, you know, number one, you know, as a public health professional, as a health professional, we got hit with a public health crisis that's unprecedented. Along with that came secondarily, an economic crisis of Great Depression level that was unprecedented. And then also the social transformation, a social crisis that came at the heels of that. So folks like me that are interested in community service work and jump up into action when things are needed. You know, folks like myself and yourself, we don't sit idle. This is the time we feel like, okay, this is our time to make a difference and bring to the conversation a necessary recovery so we can come out of this as a more formidable community, as a more formidable people. That's why the motivation on my part.
So that's really interesting because I don't know that... And we've been talking about COVID from the beginning. We were doing the show about once a week. And then when COVID hit, I kind of pivoted and started doing the show with the benefit of and flexibility and ease, to be honest with you, with the technology. It amazes me how quickly we adapted. You know, of Zoom, we were doing it a lot more than once a week. And so we've talked about COVID quite a bit. You are actually the first person to outline it for me very succinctly as being that it was a, you know, it was a medical crisis. It was a cultural or societal crisis, right? And also a business crisis. And you're right, you're sitting at that sort of that crossroads. You've got, you know, the structure of your family and sort of that is a reflection of, in my mind, would be a reflection of your kind of advocacy and community involvement in providing and improving things and proving things for people. But also, you're a businessman, you're in the medical field. It's an interesting perspective that you bring to this that I didn't really anticipate. The other thing I want to ask you relevant to that is, how did it feel? Like, did that increase your need to get more heightened in your involvement? Because it is that crisis component of it. And you feel that that is shared by a lot of people that may be in the medical profession, where a lot of the people that are in the medical profession, for the first time in a very long time, are forced to basically engage in a different manner because what's at stake is so much higher?
Yep. And so absolutely. So it's a medical professional profession got hit with this, first and foremost, as you know, both at a clinical level but also at an emotional level. Because remember, a lot of our patients that are afflicted with it, you know, we are directly in line witnessing the demise, the violent nature of this disease. And now it hits multiple organs. Almost all specialty, you know, got involved in this. And of course, we all, you know, learned this or re-learned the science of assessing the data, the outcomes, you know, the testing methods and how accessible it is to people. So we were all put into a public debate on this. And, you know, I had to advise our families, our communities, and we were the go-to people. Regardless of whether you were actually directly seeing COVID patients or not, a lot of people relied on your advice and our, you know, ability to comfort them through this crisis. So medical professions were, you know, definitely got in the thick of it, in the middle of it rather instantly. So that is affected us both at an emotional level. I'll tell you one, in the last two, three weeks, I got at least eight calls of my patients that have passed away. And, you know, that I'm inquiring about, you know, could it be COVID? I think four of them were COVID. And some of these were my long-term patients. I'm a neurologist. I don't really see infectious disease or intensive care work. I don't do that upfront. But these are people that had come to me for neurological reasons for years. And then now they're succumbing to this disease. And this is just really unusually, you know, at a rapid pace and frequent pace. And that's affecting me emotionally because I've known a lot of these families for a long time. So not only that, but I mean, also, you know, let's realize that that we had to, it sort of reinvigorated our own self-respect in medicine. Because, you know, even medicine is, what we call, in medicine, we call it moral injury. The way the physicians had been working and the hours they'd been working and, you know, and the requirements and demands on them from other entities, like administrators and performance issues. I mean, this is something that also has reinvigorated our interest in public health, public space, public safety. But like I said, both emotional and social levels, it also got us...
Well, you know, Dr. Faisal, it's interesting you should say that because as much, there are two things come to mind. You know, people are on both sides of the equation are basically blaming people for politicizing COVID. Because of what you just described and because politics basically is a reflection of society's engagement with government. You know, we talk about it like it's this evil word. It defines a relationship, a contract, a social contract that we basically sign into, right? As members of a society, of a community. It was impossible for anybody to think that this medical crisis was not going, as the way it was permeating and affecting people, emotionally, psychologically, financially, you know, reality of living, you know, not being able to see family members. It was impossible to think it was completely non-reality based, to think that this was not going to be a bigger engagement level, right? The other thing is that as much as that has been the case and as much as, you know, almost to ad nauseam, we have talked about certain communities, certain members of certain professions being impacted, the restaurant industry, stuff like that, right? I have to tell you, I am still hard-pressed to say that the medical profession and the impact on the medical profession because of the six months almost of, you know, basically war conditions, battle conditions, right? Has even been discussed to the depth it needs to be. It almost reminds me of how forever caregivers, just in senior industry, for example, it was just a given that the caregivers were there to be able to be caregivers. And nobody was talking until very recently about the emotional, psychological, physical impact on caregivers, the need for them to basically be, you know, receive sort of, not psychological, but like emotional support, you know, mental health support. Do you feel that we have actually really engaged with the impact on the medical profession as a society in that conversation or not yet?
No, it's not in any narratives being discussed, right? I mean, at this point, obviously, that conversation is absent. I think I agree with you. It is a valuable conversation because
Sadly, it's absent.
Health industry has different moving parts, right? It's just not the physician or the hospital CEO, but you have the nurses, the allied professionals, the secretary, unit secretaries that are sitting in those COVID units for eight-hour, 16-hour shifts. The exposure is immense. The risk is immense to them. And also, all the downstream services that are affected, infusion services, home care services. And, you know, for everybody has lost economically something, some more than others. And we haven't really spoken of the emotional toll at all, psychological toll on service providers because...
Isn't that fascinating, though? Doctor, I mean, it's fascinating because we talked, I mean, we had this whole sort of like a little bit of a, like a little bit of an upswing of, you know, essential workers, essential services, you know, like first responders. And it was like, it was like, we salute first responders. We support first responders. Okay, now we're moving on to the other topic. But it's really funny. It's like, because, because the reason why we're even taking time right now to discuss this is the impact and effect, correct me if I'm wrong, the impact and effect psychologically, emotionally, financially on these people that are on the front lines dealing with this. And it wasn't a weekend excursion. It's been six months. It's likely to be another six months, right? At least. These people are going to have ripple effect impacts going forward. And how do we, as a society, address those? Or do we just sweep them under the carpet and say, oh, that was 2020?
Right. I mean, one of the issues is we had case examples of nurses or LVNs, which are secondary nurses, support staff going into these elderly care units. And if they wouldn't show up, they would get fired. If they protest that they don't have proper protective equipment, you know, they had, they would lose their jobs. And some whistleblowers came out, but it didn't become a national debate about what's a responsible responsibility of administrators to provide that.
Imagine if we said to the soldier, "You have to show up to the battlefield and go into the front line." And you go, "Well, I don't have a weapon. Hasn't been issued to me. I don't have protective gear." And well, if you don't show up, you're basically going to be court-martialed. I mean, it's...
That, and then the number of health professionals that have actually succumbed to the disease and have died. It's not a small number, more so in Europe than America so far, but it's still a significant number.
So we have, I think we have established why you felt after years of being involved in community outreach and engagement that it may be something where you need to step up your, like you said, you scale up your involvement to where maybe you were sitting in a little bit more of a policy impacting position. And so tell people that don't know about District 2 in Fullerton. I mentioned when I, in my opening, that, you know, Fullerton is one of those cities in Orange County that has been districted. And so if you won't mind, just give people a little bit of a sense of your community.
Yeah, so Fullerton is going to, first time really have district-wide elections, in a sense. Last cycle was a sort of partial encroachment into that. This is the first time when three out of five districts are up for election with no incumbents. My district, District 2, it's north of Fullerton. It is the only district that we have actually technically four candidates running. The other districts, the other two districts only have two competing. This district is mostly residential. We have very little, you know, commercial real estate here. Mostly residential, single-family homes. Larger homes tends to be the more affluent district. It is more elderly, with less homes, have kids at home. It's about 20% Asian, perhaps 10, 20, 15% Latino. And mostly elderly, majority white district. Tends to ultimately a little more conservative, you know, compared to other districts. But it's a good, it's a good community. We moved here because we wanted to raise our kids in a culturally rich environment. This had things, opportunities for kids, for growth. You know, my kids even, they had special needs. There were special needs kids because we had adopted them. So we needed a place where schools could offer multi-age programs like this, in this area, we did. So they can have emotional stability and we achieved that. We found it to be a great place to raise family, a very safe place. And those are the features of this community that, you know, the sense of community, you know, that I would very cherish. I mean, I have a church on my street, you know. I don't go to church, but I have a church on my street. And you don't have that concept anymore in America, right? The neighborhood where, you know, you have the spiritual and communal life that can evolve around something. So I found that really beautiful. And you see a lot of that element in the community here.
So that also sounds to me, I mean, it's beautiful. I mean, you painted a very nice picture of your community and why you cherish it or you enjoy being there. But also, what you did say to me is that there's a large bunch of people that are, you know, long-term residents, long-term owners, or long-term residential, right, owners. I'm going to let you basically discuss it. But I, you know, I want to go down the path of, well, okay, so what, you know, what does this picturesque, almost Mayberry kind of description that you just did? What are some of the issues? Because again, it's districted, right? So twofold, the question, two questions. One, what is like a place like District 2 in Fullerton? Sounds like Hunger Games. District 2 in Fullerton basically have, as far as issues that you are running on, right? That are meaningful into your immediate local, you know, two degrees of separation community. But also, you opened up the door sort of for me in saying that Fullerton, which is true, this is the first election season or cycle where it is fully district elections. Because last time, a common friend of ours, Ahmad Zahra, basically, that was a district, that was the first time, I think it was District 3. I think Ahmad is in District 3, maybe. So how does that play out? Or how do you anticipate that's going to play out? For people that forever have been used to voting across city, now basically they're being asked to vote, you know, in their district. Explain to people, because not a lot of places in Orange County have that yet. A lot of places in Orange County are at large. Explain that to people and explain that, how that has basically maybe played out in your strategy for your campaign.
So we have, some of the input, brief input that I have received is that not too many people are critical of it, but some people are very concerned about it. And some people are critical of the districting. And they would have seen and they would have liked an opportunity to be able to vote broadly for all the candidates.
What is their concern based on? I mean, I can anticipate your answer, but please, what's their concern, do you think, based on?
I think right now their concern arises from just the present representation at the council. I think it's a general dismay from the current representation and lack of transparency. But I think we haven't yet experienced fully districted elections. So I'm not sure if this concern is really fully validated yet. But I think people would have liked to vote for, you know, some people would have liked to vote broadly. But the way it changes a campaign, though, it's very interesting because number one, it becomes a little bit manageable. You know, especially somebody like me who's going to maintain this full-time practice. So I can do, I can focus on the issues of interest of the district.
You're not running all over town. You're not, you're not having to cover all over town. You're not having to sell yourself all over town or hold these meetings all over town. Your area is really districted.
Although personally, I don't want to ignore that component because the city has to operate as a city. But I think the district has specific issues. Like, for example, you know, we have, infrastructure is the biggest issue citywide. So it is number one on my platform. We need to repair roads. We need to, you know, we need to repair the pipes and water main lines because things keep breaking too often. But also for me, because I wear a public health hat, there are repairs that we do have to be critical in recognizing that they have to be safe for our elderly to be able to walk with a walker. Because my institution, St. Jude, receives, one of its largest admissions is elderly injuries. And so we need to create that. So we have data on that. So we have an interest in creating a very safe environment. Second biggest issue on platform is economic recovery. So this is a, every city is dealing with deficits. This is going to be part of our culture in terms of our discussions at the policy level for the years to come. But we need to come out of this in a robust way. We need for serious economic recovery. And we cannot get it fast enough. So we need to figure out, we work in conversations of what cities can do to make sure we enhance it, facilitate it. My third biggest platform issue that's really more, that resonates in the district, you know, in a significant way, is public health and safety of the elderly, the adolescent, mental health. Fullerton still ranks higher in Orange County for heroin addiction and opioid crisis-related issues. So those are the critical things that we will, I'll be the one that in my position allows me to be an advocate for, not just for the district, but really for the whole city.
So you know, it's interesting is, because I oscillate, okay? Because it's such a new idea kind of for Orange County. And I always look at who's pushing it. Like, if the city, if a city basically goes into, like, somebody's basically trying to get districts to happen, I always look behind the curtain. I always try to figure out why is it that that particular entity is trying to force this, right? And to be honest, not all the time is it a benevolent effort that's in the best interest of the community. Sometimes it's a manipulative, special interest approach to try to, whatever, green light, you know, fast track, whatever, or trying to regain some control that maybe seems to be lost because of the changing culture in the community. Whatever. Be that as it may, what I think is interesting about what you just shared, and thank you for doing that, is that if you are living in a district in Orange County where you are now being asked to vote in a district, I totally get the frustration and the level of angst and whatever because you're being asked to do something completely different from what you've done forever, right? You're being now told, "No, no, you get to vote for your person only." But if you just flip the other side of that coin and go, "Okay, so I get to vote for only one person." But it's actually even more supercritical that that person from your district is now the right person because really, they are going to be your instrument, if you will, to pursue the larger citywide efforts. Like, you're not going to basically just fix the pipes. And I know you guys have an issue with the pipes in Fullerton, you know, just because of age, right? And the repairs and sustainability of the repairs, all this stuff. But, you know, you're not going to fix the pipes in District 2 only or up to District 2. And then basically, you know, that other council member didn't really support it. If you are a resident of a district, I think it is now even more important that you educate yourself about who your candidates are and what they can do to wear multiple hats. Because they're going to be your only, you know, like, sort of, your quality control, your double-check system on the larger issues. And so that, you know, like, you immediately shifted. You're like, yes, I am from District 2, but I also understand that my responsibility is to be engaged and with the council at large on that. I think it's a very fascinating growth for Orange County as a whole, for those areas that have districts. Because I don't know that it's, we're done. I think there's going to be a lot more efforts in different cities to do the same thing in the future.
And I think, you know, from a campaign perspective, it's actually, it's helpful because one of the things you want to ensure is that we, you know, we don't keep playing that game where city council races, in terms of money, it gets to the point where once, you know, assembly races work. You don't need millions of dollars. I think the containment of that is that you can do more with less money, reach out to people. And just like congressional district, districting is as good as your representative being able to advocate that those neighborhoods need. May not win all the votes, you know, because everybody's representing a different district. But I think people, you want to elect, you want to make sure that they understand the district results, understand the city has to operate as a whole.
Well, and, you know, like I said, given what's been going on recently, given, if I had lived in District 2, I'm just using Fullerton as District 2, but it could be any district. If I was living in the district, if I was in Sacramento, I am in Sacramento, if I was voting in a district, part of me would be basically very agitated that I don't get to weigh in on the other districts. Like, wait a minute, for the last, whatever, I've been in Sacramento since '87, for the last oodles of years, I basically have had, you know, I have had the say in every person that was running, whether I was going to vote for them or not. So it really makes it a much more focused, actually, vote, which is really interesting because I never really thought about it until we were just talking here, right? And I really now basically measure the quality of the candidate that I may vote for because that is my representative to the city. You know, like, it's like when we vote for a congressman or a senator, right? That is my region's representative to the congress or the senate. It's kind of the same thing. And I like, I do like, I'll tell you, I do like the idea that it is not this endless pit that sucks up money every election cycle. Because when that becomes the drive for the candidate, that becomes the drive for the campaign is that we just have to basically stay ahead of basically being in the red, right? In order to last a marathon of running. It takes away, I think, from the spirit of what we're trying to do, which is basically elect people that bring quality, character, credibility, credentials to do the job. It is the job. It's not the seat. We keep voting people into a seat versus into a job. And the opposite side of that, if it's not districted or if it's not limited in terms of the run, that's why I think in a lot of cases, that person, like you're in your case, you get elected to District 2. Next election cycle, if you're running for reelection, you are not going to have to start building your coffers from day one that you're in the seat. Like, it's still a controlled area. It's still a manageable representation. And then while you're doing the job, even though you may have an outreach to the city, maybe it's through the mayor or whatever, but your primary responsibility, it's like your primary responsibility as a physician, would be to your patients. Your patients are the residents of District 2. So it actually is a healthier way to go about things because we've tried the other one and it seems, and I can't even believe I'm saying this, Faisal, honestly, because up till this point, I have been like adamantly like, no districts. Because I know who's pulling the strings in some cases. And I'm like, no, I'm not letting you win this one. But so that's really very cool. So you have an elderly population in your district because these are people that are longtime residents, right? So that appeals, you know, to your responsibility as a physician, as a neurologist. Because, I mean, my father is 84, let me tell you. We are in direct communication with our neurologists quite often, right? And then he has got a bit of a dementia. So it's, again, you know, these are very critical people in that. As a physician, I love your campaign slogan of the "Build, Serve, and Heal", by the way. So tell me a little bit about that. How did that come about?
Well, that just, that comes about from, you know, my years of work and my personality. Because, you know, what I did is, all these years that I've been engaged in building my business as a healthcare owner, healthcare business owner, building nonprofits and, you know, for the sake of community service. So building, for me, relates to the building component of my platform, which is building infrastructure, rebuilding it. And then serving is my long record of community service with reaching out to people. I got, and I'm really blessed to actually be even to share this story when the pandemic hit. All I did is I wrote a letter to all my neighbors. I said, "If you're an elderly or if you're a single parent who is not willing to or unable to go to the grocery store, you know, here's my cell number, please call me and I'll just go do that." And somebody put that on Facebook, that letter, copied that letter. So then I started getting these calls. People wanted to volunteer. And then we created a RAG tag group of like 30 volunteers on WhatsApp. We assigned an intern to it. And then next, working with St. Jude and other organizations in the area, we ended up serving about 100 seniors in the next, you know, few weeks and just bringing supplies and groceries to them. And it was a short-term project, but it just, you know, I'm the guy who gets active and comes out for a call of service. You know, I'm energetic enough, young enough to be able to put my, you know, energies...
Well, you recognize something from your professional capacity. You saw the thing where a need was going to be there. And you took action at a grassroots neighborhood level because there was a need. And you felt that you could maybe help in a capacity. And then that basically became inspirational to other people. I think that's a wonderful story to share. So thank you for sharing that.
And that comes the idea of healing after that. Healing is part of my profession. So I do, I do think we're going through a transformation in this country where there's a lot of contentious issues. I mean, I think my job has always been to heal, heal the wounds. And that's, I think, that's my philosophical perspective is that I feel like...
Be it physical, emotional, or cultural. I mean, I think, I think that's a very, very good word to use because I agree with you. We are in need of healing. We are in need of unity versus divisiveness. And without getting too much on the national platform, at the end of the day, it all trickles down to our neighborhoods At the end of the day, it all trickles down to our neighborhoods and our streets and our blocks, you know, so. I, I told, I told him, said it, I, I do want you to, to talk a little bit about. Cause I'm very intrigued. Tell me about mindsnetwork.org.
Mines is a, it's, it stands for Medical Network Devoted to Service. It's a nonprofit that I co-founded going back almost nine to ten years ago. And this was in, in the middle of a healthcare crisis where people. Were really suffering from lack of care and access to care and, and unaffordable care. And at that time, we, we, the goal was to provide charitable free healthcare. By creating a network of physicians in, in the area. To those families that really did not have access to it. So over the last few years, that's, we have successfully been able to serve many families. And, and patients. Now our focus is, you know, in terms of general healthcare provision. Our focus has really shifted to more neurological disabilities. And so with the help of my large healthcare group. We're focused on needs and, and issues of patients with, that are afflicted with long-term neurological conditions. But this has been a very rewarding experience. Through this mind model, we were able to do a lot of service projects, get out in the communities. One of my pet peeves always was that a lot of the healthcare outcomes are determined by social. Social setting. And, and the social issues. So when, when we founded the organization, I, I, we got together brainstorming, I told the team. We need to get into people's homes, meaning we need to get into the mindset to see what they're dealing with. And this is the one way we really heal. You know, their other so, health, healthcare needs. And that's, that's really what led to this. And we were successful enough to serve hundreds of families. Since then.
So. What do you mean by getting into their homes? Are you talking about like going beyond? The immediate need, like going into more of a sustainable way, like the more you know, the more you can sustain the positive impact of whatever you may do. To improve their lives?
Right, so for example, you know, we had a, we had a client or patient who needed, who was, who was gonna go undergo renal transplant. Kidney transplant, which was gonna be in San Diego. And one of the problems of this patient was that he couldn't get there because he couldn't make that. He didn't have the place to stay necessarily there, you know, before and after. So that's a need that, you know, nobody really has thought of. Had not thought of till the case came to our attention, so we helped facilitate it. For him a place to be comfortable there before and after. So those are the kind of elements that are in the periphery of healthcare. That we were able to help support, you know, folks to get the proper care, the need.
Yeah, you know what, that, it, it's very similar to like, for example, how what Ronald McDonald House does specifically for parents. Of kids that are basically. You know, going to whether it's chalk or, or wherever that, that their kids is, it's placed for, because. And, and I, I know a bunch of people at that organization, a bunch of people that actually have benefited from the organization and. It, it's a, it's a genuine. Help. When you basically take care of that component, because then, especially in the case of like you saying a surgery or something like that. The patient, the family, the support system can focus on the actual thing that they're there for and not be worried about all this other stuff. I wanna talk a little bit wider, because you and I kind of talked about it a little bit, right? We, whether it be Fullerton and District Two, whether it be Fullerton, whether it be Orange County at large, there are some common issues that we are all either facing. Or we're gonna be facing as a community quite soon. Okay, and. A lot of it has to do with, I'll say, call them elderly, whether they call themselves active adult, but I don't think they wanna call themselves seniors anymore. But. Let's talk about that, because we have a community that's aging. We have a county that's aging. We have a change of dynamics because of that, that impacts everything from how we basically. Benefit from our payroll taxes, our sales taxes, our housing prices, all of that stuff, right? Do you feel that in your role as a city council member? That you and your background in terms of community involvement and advocacy. Do you feel that this is something that we are prepared for? Or is it something that we really need to kind of get our attention on?
Well, I mean, so for, for, for elderly care, we're not prepared for it. You know, California is Commission on Aging is, has put out some great reports. Both on elderly justice and, and, and what they call the roadmap. For, for elderly care. The master plan is what it's referred to. It's, it's got great data, great information. We wanna transform that into policy, both at the county level. City level. Counties, county, for example, runs the healthcare of, of the, of all the cities here essentially. So county is a very incredible, you know, component of it. For me in the city council, you know, and being connected in the healthcare field. I can real bit more easy navigate the system of healthcare vis-à-vis county. So I can be there to advocate for elderly. And, and active adults. But really elderly care requires safety first, you know. The safety is critical, both from injuries, from abuse, from scams. You know, and I think those, that's where a lot of the investment needs to go through. And all that stuff is going to be exponentially growing, all the, all the adverse. You know, sort of these, these adverse elements in and around the elderly, as elderly population grows. So it is going to be a lot more to manage, a lot more to handle, a lot more funding needs where the funding is simply not there.
Yeah, I, I, I agree, I agree with you. And, and you know, people say, well, why do you keep harping on this rod? Well, in part. The rad life is, you know, start off as a, as a journey of aging or talking about issues like that, and we've been very. Blessed to have a sort of a front seat. To an early, you know, preview, if you will, or, or, or a trailer for what's coming. For, for five years now. And I really, it really concerns me. Plus, there's another. You know, kind of a selfish part to this, right? I'm fifty-four years old. I don't really, and, and I have a father who's eighty-four, and I'm dealing with this. From a first person. You know, level, first degree level myself and not take away from my sister either. She's very much an instrumental part of what we've been able to do for my dad. But it really, I really worry, because. If you're fortunate enough to have the means, the, the ability to build that infrastructure based on your personal needs as these things appear. It's still very difficult. It's still very emotionally draining. It's still very, I can't, you can't just snap your fingers and basically. It's done. It takes a lot of. Effort, coordination. I've been learning about this stuff for the last five years and I still didn't know enough. And so I worry about the people that don't have those means, the people that are in. In our. You know, in our, in our responsibility. I am my brother and my sister's keeper, right? So it's. We, we, and it worries me. So I appreciate you, hearing you say that, because I do believe that. The, the strongest advocate for this. Would be at the city council and that would basically be what really needs to be heard at the county, because the county. Has other things that draw on it. At the end of the day, things get prioritized, but. If we're not ready for this, which we are not, you, you and I agree on this. It's like a tsunami. I mean, they call it a silver tsunami. The last time a tsunami hit the coast of Florida, there was a lot of damage. You know, so it's not all, you know, we're in California, we're thinking, oh, it's a tsunami, cool man, there's gonna be some cool waves, we're just gonna catch some cool waves, right? Yeah, but there's also gonna be a lot of damage if we're not ready for that tsunami. Like if I saw the, when is, when, what are you doing right now? Where can people get ahold of you or, or, or come and hear you? I'm assuming you're doing a lot of stuff, obviously virtually.
Yeah, so this campaign is very, very unique, but it's my first campaign ever, but it's interesting. It has the pros and cons, of course, but it is, a lot of it is a Zoom campaign. We're doing, we're doing a lot of discussions where I have created a platform for people to come and. Give the input, because I think it's time to listen to people. So every Tuesday evening, we're doing a platform town hall. It's a platform for people to come and join. Our, our Facebook web pages is, is, is where we advertise a lot of that, but our own website. Which is votdrkazi.com. Has a lot of resources for folks. But I, you know, that you mentioned about a manageable district. Here I'm comfortable, you know, I have my email to all the, the sixteen thousand voters. And I'm very comfortable in having all sixteen thousand voters can directly get ahold of me. And I can manage at least responding to the, the concerns to as many of those who are interested in reaching out. It, it becomes a little difficult, of course, if it's, if it's a, you know, the entire population of a city. But please, yeah, we want people to engage in, in local issues. So one of the goals is to educate people on local issues in terms of getting, and to get them excited about it, get them interested into it. I don't, I just don't want the national mood and national election and mood around the national election to really. Define all the conversations that are, that go on here in our cities. I think there's a lot more. I tell people, if you feel like. You, you, you feel like you're, you're not feeling the national candidates. Just know that your vote is very, very powerful when you start dealing with your assembly people, your county supervisors, when you're a city councilman. Your school board members, then you'll see really the power and impact you can make directly. And this is the education we need to provide to voters, so that they don't get discouraged, you know.
Well, and, and, and the political process as far, for a voter. Can seem overwhelming sometimes, right? And especially, you know, coming off the tail end, or not the tail end, but in, being in the midst of a pandemic where you, you know, you're worried about your safety, you're worried about. You know, now I'm ordering all my groceries, I can't even go to the grocery store, you're concerned about if somebody coughs near you. I think that the sense of stress and overwhelminglyness actually is very much part of our daily life right now, more so than it was before. And for things that are out of our control, we don't really have an ability to basically turn on the switch and say, okay, it's over. Right now. So you're right, it could, it could become very overwhelming and then the noise from the national level is distracting as well, and in the course of that. Just basically decide, you know what, I'm just in like almost post-traumatic stress disorder. I am, I'm gonna sit in the corner of my room and, and rock and forget it, I'm not gonna vote. That is a very real risk, as far as I'm concerned in, 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 in November. So. Kudos for you for keeping the focus on what is manageable and where your voice can really count, which at the end of the day. All news, all, all, all policy is local policy, all policy, all news is local news. If you make one decision that you can feel. You know, or spend energy to make one decision this election cycle. In the midst of being overwhelmed by everything else going on. You get to decide who. Represents you at the first, first. Gate. Right? Of policy, your city council. And that is a decision you should take very seriously and spend the energy to know your candidates. Who, so you said there's four candidates running for your, for your district?
Yep. Yeah, we're the largest one.
So it's your first, it's your first public, first run for office. It is four candidates, which is the largest, largest number of people running in the districts in Fullerton. It's a pandemic.
Yeah.
Nothing like jumping, jumping into the deep end of the pool.
It, it, well, but I'm, I'm used to the first, you know, in, in a sense that, you know, I've, I've, you know, I've had. I'm blessed with the opportunity to create programs that had not existed.
Right.
Before, so it is, it's in itself very exciting to be able to do that. I'm the last candidate to jump in the race. But I, I can, I mean, I'm, I'm convinced that we are making strides and making the impact. If, and if nothing else. We have the requisite outreach to really educate people, get them interested. And one of my goals is to really get people interested in local affairs. And not the national mood define, you know, what they feel.
You know, the, the thing I do know about you. If I saw is that regardless of the outcome in November. Your continuing engagement and involvement to make things. And better and to leave people better than you find them, isn't going to end. That will just continue to, as, I really love the way you just said, you know, scale up. You're gonna continue to scale up. Right? I don't think I've ever heard anybody refer to community involvement as a scale up. Usually it's like, oh my God, you know. Good deed goes unpunished. Here's more to, for me to do. But it, it, you will continue to scale up and. If I was in District Two, I'd be voting for you, because District Two, I think, is very lucky to have you. As somebody who's willing to step up. And put yourself in, in the ring and it is a, you know, politics can be a blood sport sometimes. So. So I really appreciate you taking the time to, to spend some time with me. Let's give people again the website. For your campaign. I don't have it on the screen, but give people the website again, please.
Yes, it's www.votdrkazi.com, which is D R Q A Z I dot com. There's no U after the Q. That's a grammatical thing, but it's. W W W dot vote D R Q A Z I dot com.
Well, Dr. Q, I appreciate you being on and again, wish you all the luck in November and I, as always, will be watching what you're doing, but. I really. I really appreciate you stepping up. I always do, regardless. What, and you know, as much as. We like to always believe that city council elections that I purposely did not mention before in the show, but you know, are a non-partisan situation. You know, they tend to get a little bit contentious and, and, and tend to be a little bit more party, but I really believe. That they should be. Non-partisan. And I, I, you, you have made a believer out of me in terms of the districting process, because. There's editors like you that are running for districts. I can definitely get behind the districting process and that is a big thing for me to say, let me tell you.
It means a lot.
It really, it really is. I'm, I'm a convert. That doesn't mean I'm not gonna check what the heck's going on. I wish you luck, my friend, and keep doing what you're doing. You're doing great work. And for anybody who is also interested, please check out. Dr. Kaz's mindsnetwork.org. It's a great. Initiative. They do really wonderful work and. Hopefully we, you will come back and we'll talk to you again after you're at city council or, to be honest, regardless. So I'd love to have you on again. You're always welcome, my friend, and I wish you again, good luck in November.
Thank you so much and thanks for having me.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Bye-bye.